Good evening and welcome to the Housing Committee. Today is Monday, December 9, 2019. Please join me for the pleasure of a legend. Councilor District F, Michael Plant, and myself, Council District D, Giovanni Rodriguez. Can I get a motion to approve minutes from Monday, September 23rd, 2019?
All right, councilors, we have our council present today. To my left, Councilor Large Pavel Payano,
Councilor District F, Michael Plant, and myself, Council District D, Giovanni Rodriguez. Can I get a motion to approve minutes from Monday, September 23rd, 2019? Holos and Phil, please say aye. There is Harvard. So tonight, we have two items on the agenda. Item 13219 and 189819, so let's go to the top of the agenda. Item 13219 is a surplus property in 347 South Broadway. It was put together by Liza Orange, the assets officer. So Liza, can you please come join us and talk to us about this property?
So 347 South Broadway, our disposition process was a request for proposal. Our minimum bid was for $62,200. We received a total of seven bids. And if you look through your package, there should be a summary of the bids. So we received a total of seven bids ranging from $62,200 to $123,000. And this property is a vacant lot located in a residential two zoning district. It has 9,000 square feet. So the Real Estate Task Force met and they select the highest bidder for $123,000. The reason why that bid was selected is the applicant is going to be an owner occupant. They are also first time home buyer. They did a great job on their proposal. I did include a copy of the proposal of what they're proposing to do is a two-family home. And their family, entire family will live on the property. One unit will be for their parents and older children. And the first unit will be for them to live in. This will be their first home, as I indicated. And it is located on the corner of South Broadway and Lenox.
All right, so it's important to say that this lot is available, that is 9,000 square feet, and is a residential two, as you mentioned. This was a request for proposal. And like Liza said, seven bidders participated in the process ranging between $62,200 to $123,000. The city decided to go for the higher bid based on the information that Liza just provided, which is great that it's going to go to a homeowner occupant. So yes, Liza, it's going to be a home, not a house, which is a huge difference. Thank you, Liza, for all that information. And councilors, there is any question about this proposal? Councilor Plant?
So I'm looking at the seven proposals that are here. So one sticks out at me that's different than the rest. Could you talk a little bit about the single family and the other ones that are all multi-families?
The single-family home application that we received did not have sufficient information. As you can see, there's several different boxes in here. They did not include a cost estimate, so we were missing that. They did not include a schedule. They did not include any expertise. Their pre-approval was insufficient. And there was no indication in their application whether they were going to live in the property, whether they're owner occupants, whether they're first time home buyer. Their application was very limited. It was a single patient, didn't include much information to the side.
And just so I'm clear, there's no structure on the property currently?
There is no construction.
It's just an empty space?
Mm-hmm.
With trees or whatever?
Councilor, is there any other questions? Councilor Payano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Ray Services, I don't know them at all. It says here that they have ample years of construction experience. Is that something that the city checked into? That this is an individual, that, you know, there's nothing outstanding with the city, that, you know, last, that they have worked here in the past?
During the application, I included in here, I believe the applicant does construction work. He is here if you want to ask them directly, but I don't recall right now.
Are you saying that the applicant is the...
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, I know that they're going to occupy it, but I'm saying like...
He's not going to be building the home himself, but he does have some contracting background.
Right, so he has experience.
Right, but I mean, but he has a general, he has a general contract.
Hola.
Just name an address for the record. Of course, yes.
My name is Luis Alcántara. She's my wife. She is Denia Maria Aureña del Cantara.
What is your current address? Current address?
Tre, North Parish Road, South Lawrence.
So it's 3 North Parish Road, Apartment 1, Lawrence, Mat 01843. It's right on the front page of the...
So ask them the question that Councilor Payano just asked.
Can you repeat your question?
Sure. So my question is, I'm just interested in regarding the general contractor. I think you had mentioned that he has some experience or something like that. So the question that I asked was, is he the contractor?
So la pregunta que él tiene es, la aplicación indica usted tiene alguna experiencia de contrato. Usted no va a ser la persona que va a hacer el contrato, sino que... They will not be building the property. They hired, they will hire engineers.
They contract on Ray Services?
Okay, so now to, did the city look into Ray Services to check if, sort of, like what... Does Ray Services owe anything with the city? Have they have issues with the city in the past? You know, anything like that? Was that looked into?
No. So a lot of times when we do the proposal, sometimes they don't stay with the contract that they use. We ask for cost estimates. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to use that contractor. They will have to get apartment and use someone that's proved, at the time that that happens.
Yes, as a point of information, once they're closed on the property, they're going to have to ask for construction permits. And then based on that, that's when all those are going to be checked. They're going to hire somebody to do the construction. And that person or the company have to be up to date.
Well, no, no, so I'm aware of all that. But at the same time, you know, one of the things that we're looking into when you take a vote is, you know, it's the information that's being presented to us right now, right? So if it's, let's say this was a contractor that, you know, that I knew about and I had experience with, then I could say with confidence, like, yeah, this is going to be built, you know, to spec because this individual is not going to, you know, come up here and do a sloppy job or do something that's not presentable. But I understand what you guys are saying. It doesn't look like I'm going to get the answer that, or the certainty that I was looking for. The only reason that I'm in particular asking about this is that this is in the main street where everybody's going to be driving by this. So, you know, and then once it's built, you're kind of stuck with whatever you get. So, but that's all my questions.
Thank you. Councilor, is there any... Councilor Plant?
Just through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that there is some information on here that they actually put down some of their previous work. And of course, this is coming from them. They're not going to be shoddy working out the big stuff down here, so there is some, there are some more projects typed in on there. I'll look into that. Thank you. You're welcome. It says six parking spots in the driveway. Is there a picture of what that would look like? It seems like an awful lot of cars in one driveway.
So we did speak about that. They initially wanted six spots on one side of, but now they're thinking maybe they'll do two sides. So they're open to suggestions on that. These are some ideas what they had. So initially, they wanted to do six parkings to the left, three behind each other. We suggested after meeting with them at the Real Estate Task Force that maybe they should do three on the other side. But whatever, after they get their permit, they will decide which way it will be better. The other issue, this is a corner lot, and this is why they originally put the parking on the other side. So the parking on the right side might not work because it's on the corner lot. So they would have to look at the zoning ordinance to finalize the plan. So it will most likely stay on that side because of the corner situation.
So we're still thinking it's going to be six. We're not sure where the driveway is going to be. Are they also anticipate, well...
It's going to be to the left because of the corner. I just recall now after conversation.
So the...
And they're open to any suggestion that you may have. They're very excited to buy this property and build their dream home. So if there is a suggestion that the city, they will absolutely take that into consideration.
So a couple of things I would recommend. This is not in my district. This is, you live in my district now, but you're moving to another part of the city. My recommendations are two things. There are very active and strong neighborhood association there. They may have some thoughts and some suggestions. In addition, the district council that represents that area is very good, very knowledgeable. And I would recommend reaching out to him, Mr. Abdu, and having a discussion with him about what... Since they're open to suggestions, get that kind of advice. And maybe they have some thoughts as to what would be best. And I'm also thinking street parking as well in that area. Are we looking more at Lenox and less on South Broadway? I'm not sure where. It would seem, and I don't know how wide the streets are, but I know obviously South Broadway is large, but...
So their plan, if you look at the property, is to build the house facing Lenox. So, their plan, if you look at the properties, to build the house facing Lennox Street instead of South Broadway because it's more residential, and then to have that parking on Lennox Street to the left rather than closer to South Broadway.
So, those, those are just a, a couple of, not concerns, but just points. And also, I would, I would be thinking that through the real property task force, that that would be kind of cemented before coming before the council, they would already know where the parking is going to be, because it's always gonna be a question, especially in our city of where the parking is.
It, it was cemented, I, I forgot about it because this has been on the agenda for a couple of weeks, and I, I didn't refresh my, my notes when I came in here, but it was cemented that the parking would be on Lennox Street because of the zoning ordinance and being in the corner lot. There's also a light pole in that corner, so that wouldn't work to, um, to have that.
Okay, my last question. Is this will be going before zoning? For, because it's a, it's, it's under ten thousand square feet.
It's a residential two, residential two, which they only need seven thousand square feet, so they, it's going through inspectional services for, for a permit.
So, you don't need to go before zoning, or do, or do they?
They do not need to go.
Do not? Okay. Thank you.
Councilor, there is any question about this proposal? Just to go back, I'm looking for a vote to actually declare this property as a surplus, three forty-seven South Broadway Street. Councilor, there is any motions on these?
To declare it as a surplus?
So, I mean, the item is one that...
It's noted as the, on the agenda, it's a surplus property, but it's, it's a disposition.
Yes, it makes sense. It's a disposition.
It's a disposition.
Uh, okay, let's scratch it up. Disposition. For one thirty-two nineteen, it says position of property at three forty-seven South Broadway.
So, to add, to, to Denia Urena and Louis Alcantara.
Right. I, and I have a motion at the table, property second. There's any discussion? There's none? All of us on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
There, I say aye. Thank you, Liza. So, next meeting will, will take place on the seventeenth of this month, so we are, we are asking you to please be here, and that way we can take a final vote on this specific property.
Full council. Table recommendation.
He wants to say thank you and thank you for the consideration, and he will not let you down. This city is to be built, and they are hardworking people, and you're gonna see the great job that they're gonna be doing.
Thank you. All right, we have item two eighty-nine, I think it's a disposition of one twenty-two, one twenty-four, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Disposition.
All right, we got this right. This specific property is located on one twenty-two, one twenty-four, access three. It's on zoning, zoning business three. It's the map, map one oh six, lot thirty-eight. It's about three thousand square feet. The assessment value for this property is twenty-seven thousand dollars, and the sell price for this is the same as the assessment, is twenty-seven thousand dollars. It is being diverted, diverted deposit to Reno, Renovate Home LLC. And, Liza, can you explain a little bit about this property?
So, this property, this is a very small lot that we have on, on Essex Street. It's three thousand square feet. It's located in a B three district. It was re assessed this year for twenty-seven thousand dollars. We are proposing to sell this directly to a butter across the street for the assessed value of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Usually, when we have a lot this size, we sell it to an abutter for a dollar a square feet. In, in this case, because we are selling it to a commercial user, we are asking for the assessed value of twenty-seven thousand dollars to be sold to Renovate Homes LLC. They are located at three hundred Broadway. Their property, I'm not sure if you're familiar, on Essex Street, they own the property that used to be Subway's, and this parking is across on Milch, Milch Street. And the proposed use for this lot is strictly parking.
All right, Councilor, there is any questions about this property on one twenty-two, one twenty-four, access three?
Good question.
Councilor Plant?
So, just help me understand this a little bit better. So, it's this, the business owner? I'm just curious.
Yes.
I think it's a great use parking. We can use as much parking as we can get, so it's not a problem at all. I'm just curious, what is the, what does the applicant, what does the applicant own? What business?
So, the applicant, if you look at the map here, you're gonna see a picture of the subject property across the street, and then you're gonna see the applicant property, which is this building over here. They are going to demo that building and, and do something new, and then use some parking in their car and property and use the, buy the, the city-owned property for additional parking.
I'm, I'm curious, what is the intention of the applicant after they demolish that building? What are they gonna put there? Is it another business or residence?
It's going to be mixed use. It's going to be residence, housing.
All residence.
All housing.
Councilor, there is any questions about the, the lot located on one twenty-two, one twenty-four, access three?
Any questions?
Councilor Plant? I have a Councilor Payano.
Have we, so, this lot, what was it used for in the past?
It's been used for parking for a long time. I'm not sure if we, my understanding is that it's just open and people just go in and there and park. Sometimes nightclub people go and just use it, so it's been owned by the city for, for a while now, so it'd be great to, um, it's been owned by the city since two thousand seven, so twelve years that we're not making any money from it, so it would be great to sell it to, to someone who's gonna make good use to it, to add a little bit more housing in the city, on downtown and have plant parking.
Um, has the parking department sort of like looked into that and said that they're, you know, that they have no need for it, or that they have no plans on, you know, putting meters on it or anything like that?
Yes, so I do, when we do declare the property surplus, I do a survey of all city departments, and we specifically asked the parking department if there's any use, and it was, the reply was no. There's no need in the city for the, for the parking lot.
Just a point of information, when do, when was the, oh, just a point of inquiry, when do we declare the property as a surplus? Do you have the date?
Um...
Just to have it over here from...
Yeah, let me see. It was September ninth of this year.
September ninth?
Yes. It could have been declared surplus in year past, so what I do, because the need of the city can change, if it's something older than a year, I do a survey again, and I did, redo the survey in September, and the reply, the response was no need for the city.
Yes, yes.
Has there been, as far as, I mean, you said that, that the city might have put it up to, to bid in the past. What other, you know, when this was declared as a surplus, was there anyone else that presented like any other plans on what to use for it?
No, so I usually, what I do when I do a property surplus, I notify the abutters, just, this is a city-owned property, there's, and the only response I got was from this applicant.
Okay. I mean, I, I would assume that probably, I mean, I don't know if they would know or not, but I'm, parking is huge when it comes to anyone, so I would assume that probably a lot of abutters would be interested in purchasing parking and, you know, charging or whatever. I think one of the things that I find interesting about this project that differentiates it from something like that is that with the addition of this lot, something new would be built in an area that, you know, looks horrible, you know? And potentially beautify a little more Essex Street and bring, you know, slowly start to, to change that area. So, I think that's, that's what differentiates it. I, I had originally thought that more folks had applied, just because I know, like, with all these businesses in, in that area, one of the things that they lack is, is parking. Yeah, and I, I would, you know, tell the, you know, especially if this goes true, as a future owner, as they're thinking through the space, I think it would be a great opportunity using that first floor as, you know, business or some type of, of office use. I think that would definitely assuade a lot of the other counselors in the room. You know, one of the things that we always talk about is just, you know, bringing in, you know, like, building, like, you know, all these residences in the area and how that affects, you know, the public services, but at, at the moment, one of the only ways that we are able to rebuild a lot of these different spaces is by, by doing residence. And one of the things that I like about a lot of the projects that I've seen on Essex Street is that they've used that first floor as a, you know, to have like a business or something like that. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's something that's needed for my vote, but I think it's definitely something that they should think over.
I will suggest that to the applicant once they go through zoning and, and planning and all that, those things.
Uh, Liza, did you explain to them the actual requirement from the owners in terms of the alleyways? Because both of the properties are basically right next to an alleyway, and as a homeowner, we should start, you know, explaining to, to them, like...
With this alleyway, I, I believe that the alleyways on, on downtown Essex Street, a lot of them are, are owned by the city. The ones that are in South Lawrence residential neighborhoods for the most part are not owned by the city, so this is something I can talk to the applicant about, do a little research to see who the owner is, and then go from there.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, it's good to, to pass that information to, to them, knowing the fact that they're gonna have to deal with the alleyway in case that we, in case they own it, or at least they own half if they do. Councilor, there is any, any other question for the applicant? Councilor Plant?
I need to know, I would like to know more about the, the plans for the demolition and plans for that property. It's gonna be important for my vote. I'm just curious as to what's gonna be going on. It says it's gonna be an ancillary or ancillary, it's gonna be a primary reason for provide parking for the new homeowners, or residents, excuse me, at this place. Can, do you know more about what's gonna be put there?
Um, I can, I have, the applicant is here if you'd like to ask them directly, but I, I do know it's some housing unit, the, the amount of housing is to be determined because it, it depends on if they're able to purchase the parking from the city, but I'll...
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
June on Lopez, three hundred Broadway, Methuen.
Sure.
Well, Kiriamasweta, three hundred Broadway, Methuen.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, my, my, my question is, is this evening, we, we've heard that your plans are to acquire this property tonight for parking, parking for what you expect to be a demolished building and then built construction for, for residences. So, my question to you is, can you give me a better picture of what your intentions are with respect to, for that residential parcel?
Sure. So, just to give you a little background on, you know, what we do and who we are, you know, we do real estate. We've been in the business for the past seventeen years. We own a real estate agency in Methuen, and this is not our first project. It will be our first project, you know, from scratch, but we have renovated all the buildings in the past. With that said, we feel that there's a need in Lawrence for condo-type of properties. So, we have seen a large number of redevelopment and investment in the city, mostly in the Conal Street or in South Lawrence, but not on Essex Street this way. So, with that said, we thought that building, a nice building there where people can actually move there and be owners and have ownership and become part of the community was the best way to go about this, and that's what we're planning to do there. When it comes to the amount of units, we will, you know, obviously comply with zoning and planning and, and all the channels that we have to, to follow, so we don't have a predetermined number of units, but we do know that without this lot, for us, it just wouldn't make sense, you know, the project wouldn't be able to happen.
Right. Thank you, Mr. St. Onge, through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Do we have any kind of plans for Essex Street? How does this fit into whatever our Essex Street's plans are? I'm sure there have been tremendous discussions. Bounds of paper have been written about Essex Street revitalization. Where does this fit in, into all the discussions and all the plans on Essex Street?
I am not part of, of all those meetings, so I do know that this was passed through our, our planning director, who is part of what's going on exactly in, in downtown and everywhere else, and she is very excited about this project. The real estate task force met, and, and we are all in agreement that this is a great, something that's great for the Essex Street.
I will be very candid, as I always am. My concerns in our city is the amount of growth that we're facing, while seemingly fantastic, because we're getting more and more people places today, and that's a great, great goal, and that we're doing that. My, my fear is on the law of unattended consequences, which is what happens to the people who are currently living there, what happens to the people currently wanting to drive, uh, drive from point A to point B congestion, where people who may have children who wanna go to school, they don't have space, or people who, I mean, we've got all these different calls, so it's a, it's a, a drone that I've been beating, and many of my colleagues have shared that beat with me, but it's one that I've been beating for several years, and my concern here, because once this leaves here, if you get this property, it's going to be used to sell zoning, that what they're looking to do, and then you're gonna say, I've got all this parking here, I can do this, but what that does, what that doesn't help is the congestion problems, so it doesn't help with this number of school-aged children, et cetera, et cetera, that we just, I just mentioned. So, that's my concern with, with, with this. It's not any direct impact on you as an individual. I'm excited for the fact that you're trying to build something from scratch. This is your first opportunity to showcase your talents. You want to, you see a need, it can be a very profitable circumstances for you, plus, plus, and plus. I get all that, it's awesome, but my concern is about the increasing number of units and veterans. We just, just a second ago, set something up, but that's, that was a, a parcel right there that was in a residential area, that was, you know, conformed to that, to, is already conformed for that zoning purpose. This, sounds like it may not be conformed for that, and Essex Street being what it is, I've been here long enough to know that we've gotten issues regarding what are we doing on Essex Street? What are we doing? It's never gonna hit the, hit the heyday of nineteen forty, when people walking up and down the street. It's not gonna be like that for a variety of reasons, Amazons, Southern Hampshire, a bunch of different reasons, but the question is, what are we gonna do with Essex Street? Right? It's constant, it's still there. So, I've got some reservations. I'm not, if, if my colleagues here wanna see this go through tonight, I'm not gonna stop it, because I do think the full council should have a vote on something like this. I don't want, I don't wanna be someone that stops something from going through. I may not support it at the end, but I don't, I may not, but I don't wanna kill it here if my colleagues wanna send that up, but I will not be supporting a motion tonight. A favorable recommendation, and I would support, however, a motion to set up without a recommendation, if that's the direction that my colleagues wanna go.
Councilor Payano?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Lupus, one of the things that I would suggest is, especially before the full council, like, I, I've had, I think one of the reasons that I feel a little bit more comfortable voting tonight is that I, I took, you know, like, I, I saw some pictures of what potentially this could look like. I know everything's up in the air, but especially when you're dealing with something like this, it's important for people to sort of envision what your thoughts are, so you at least know the, the direction of where you're going. Oh, that would, that would be great.
They brought stuff with them, but I figure, you know, we're talking about the parking, let's concentrate on that, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I think that, that, that makes sense, but I, I think because this is, the parking is, what is that word? Ancillary?
Ancillary.
Ancillary, there we go, to the actual project. I think it's important to...
That's just two families.
So, I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, you know, I'll, I'll restate something that I said before, that, that parking lot right now is not being necessarily put into, into good use, you know, personally, you know, if, I would have years ago put meter, at least meters on each of these, of these spots, but it doesn't look like the city, the city definitely didn't do that, and there's no interest for them to do that, so it's just up there doing...
but it doesn't look like the city, the city definitely didn't do that, and there's no interest for them to do that, so it's just up there doing nothing. Um, the other property where Subway is, every time you drive by, there's an eyesore. Um, I'm of the belief, right, and perhaps, uh, you know, my vision or my views, you know, some might think are crazy, but I think Essex Street has potential, and I can see it being at the nineteen forties. Why not? You know, it all depends on the, uh, individuals that are involved and, um, and ensuring that there's a plan, uh, for that area. But I think if you built it and you have good projects, uh, they'll, uh, other people around that will wanna create, you know, good things too. Um, and, you know, I have full confidence in Mr. Lopez's, um, you know, previous, uh, work to think that he'd be able to do that. One of the things, I mean, I don't know, I mean, at the end of the day, you, you have a better understanding on, you know, on, on what you need to, uh, make this profitable and, you know, and make this work. Um, I think one of the things you should definitely think about, and I, I'm pretty sure would be a strong selling point with some of the other counselors, is, uh, you know, potentially using that, you know, that basement area or that first floor, whatever, as, um, as a business, um, a business space, um. Oh, it's gonna be a garage? I mean, but whatever, I mean, there, there might be, I don't, I, at the end of the day, I, I, I don't know what, what that vision is. I'm not saying that I necessarily, uh, need that for, for my vote, uh, but I think you might...
This is just an idea, and it, it, it depends on the parking, so it's to be determined.
Exactly. So this is just, uh, you know, an architect, you know, for something to show, but the potential, right? It doesn't, doesn't have to be as big, it doesn't have to be that way, but it, it gives you, you know, a better idea of what, what it could look like, right?
Um, it gives a better, a better, you know, idea of what the proj- the project could be. Um, you know, in this case, we would love to do mixed use. But if we did mixed use, then we wouldn't be able to do apartments because there's not enough parking. You know, so that's the reason why on the first floor, we, we will propose a, a parking garage.
So, so you're saying that even with the added parking...
The added parking is only eight, you, eight parking spots. Eight or ten, that's the most you can get out of it.
And you wouldn't, and you're saying zoning wouldn't allow you to put, uh, to have that first floor, whatever it is, um, be businesses?
No, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have the parking spaces to be able to do any residential, you know? Any re- a residential project. Think about it. If we use the first floor for, um, commercial, then there's no parking. The only parking will be this little piece of land.
Oh, because you're saying it's, uh, what, um, the chair was saying that your, the first floor is gonna be the garage?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, but the way that we are designing this is, as you can see, in a way that even though it's a parking, it doesn't really look like a parking, you know, garage. We, we will make sure that we do something that, you know, looks uniform with all the other buildings around it.
I would like to emphasize that the lot that we're proposing to sell, it's a very small lot. So it's, it's a very small portion of the bigger project. Um, it is only three thousand square feet.
No, but it's important, Eliza, it is important that we actually talk about the potential, and, and because without the parking, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't happen. So, uh, definitely it's important to talk about, you know, what's the, the beautiful building that is gonna happen. Uh, it's six stories, seven, seven, ten, prefer twelve, I prefer twelve, fifteen, and that we can develop the city that way, you know, higher up to the vertical. Uh, but this is, this is something, this, to me, is a good start, to be honest with you. Uh, and, and if we follow this through, I mean, it's gonna be beautiful.
And that's what we, that's what we hope. We, we really think that this project can be the start of something, you know, something really cool. That's, that's, you know, that's what we think. Um, and, and going back to your question, I, I, I agree with your concern. Um, but you have people coming into Lawrence anyways. And if you have people coming into Lawrence, it's just my opinion, that it's better to make them homeowners or, you know, compared to renters. Um, that's just, you know, you, you see people taking care of the properties, and, um, you know, when, once you become part of the community, you own a piece of real estate, then you're part of the community, and that's why, that's the reason why we, you know, we would like to do condominiums instead of just, you know, renting them.
So essentially, it's gonna be independent units, it's gonna be a condo, uh, condo, condo association?
Exactly. That what we have in mind, yes. Night roof tech on the roof, all that good stuff. Hopefully, you know, if we are able to do the project, yes, move forward with the project.
Are you guys gonna prioritize, um, homeowner occupied?
I'm sorry?
Are you guys gonna prioritize homeowner occupied?
It will be just for homeowners, um...
Oh, because I mean, it could be an investor that buy three, four units and then rent it.
Yeah, but normally in this type of project, isn't, that's not really that common here. You know, because the numbers don't add up for someone to actually buy the project like that and, and be able to make it, you know, profitable. So, um, but yes, of course, we would do that, yes.
And, uh, and, and I mean, I know that everything is preliminary, but I mean, are you thinking about two, two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Mostly two bedrooms, yes.
All right, any, uh, Counselor LeBlanc?
Um, I, I would just say, I, I think that it's a unique idea, and I think that it's, uh, um, it's definitely gonna be a challenge for you guys, and I, and I appreciate that you're willing to take that because, um, you know, selling condos, uh, you know, especially in Lawrence, it's not necessarily that, that happens all the time. Um, but I think that it will bring in, uh, you know, a unique set of individuals to that area, um, and potentially, like I think one of your, your other selling points is by bringing in these, um, you know, new folks in that area that are essentially homeowners, um, even if you're not able to provide a business space in that building, um, you are providing individuals that would be looking to shop and do stuff around the area. So potentially because these, I don't know, fifteen to whatever amount of people are moving in, um, and we're talking about, you know, two bedrooms, so it's not like four bedrooms, five bedrooms. Um, they're, they're gonna be individuals with disposable income, so it's more likely that, um, you know, across the area, folks might wanna spruce up their business for, uh, whatever, you know, um, whatever it could be. So I think that's part, that's part of the selling point, and, you know, make sure that as you're advocating for this project and, um, you're, you know, talking to other counselors, that's something you mentioned. Because I'm sure that anyone that thinks about Essex Street, one of the things that you're gonna think about, besides the, uh, the bringing in people and, uh, sort of, um, you know, connecting to like the public safety stuff and schools, whatever, um, and the, the, the city resources, is, oh, we're taking up, um, you know, potential space for, for businesses, right? And I think that's a good way to sort of, uh, necessarily go around that, but like, uh, show how you are great, like that, that you will be a resource, and, um, with your project, you'll be able to, the city will create more, more business. Um, I like the fact, I mean, as far as the condo association, I hope that when you guys do that up, that's, uh, that's something that is, uh, very strong, um, 'cause some of the other condos that I've seen in Lawrence, one of the things that they lack, it was a strong condo association. But those are like, you know, like three families that perhaps shouldn't have been, uh, condos to begin with. I think what you're doing here is something completely different, so, um, thank you guys very much, um...
Okay, uh, Counselor LeBlanc?
Thank you, so, two questions, thank you to my colleague who spurred a couple of questions. One is with the parking currently existing without these ten spaces over the diagram, how many units can be built there by right today?
Uh, um, I would, I don't have the answer with me right now. I can, um, provide that later on. I'd have to consult the lan- land use planner.
So that would, that first question, and, and generally, not generally, in, 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 with respect to that as well, I would also wanna know, the additional ten spaces, what does that provide? If these were to be provided to, to the, uh, to the applicant, that I would imagine gives them a wider berth, because one of the questions before zoning is, do you have parking?
So...
Now they say, yes, we have ten or more spots, so that's the question. So how much right now without the parking? How many units, once they get additional parking, would be my question. You can just get back to me later on that.
I will, um, get back to you, but, and so we all know, uh, for one unit, you need one parking. For anything more than one, you need two parking spots. So two bedrooms, you need two parking spots.
For two bedrooms?
So the, so the ten parking on our side, that, that the city on lot would be, um, for five units, five two-bedroom units. If they're one-bedroom units, for ten units.
If you just send that to me so I can digest that a little better, it'd be helpful. Also in this picture that the applicant gave to us, I see some vehicles currently being parked. Now that's, this is obviously currently owned by the city, so we have, we have individuals who are currently parking there. You know... Pardon me?
People park there.
That's gonna be my point.
Like, I'll, I'll tell you a little bit of history about how, how people park there.
This is, this is where I wanna go with this, so because parking is at a premium, because they're parking there, I'm guessing for free, I don't think anybody's charging.
No, if you go at night there, they're actually charging for that parking.
They're charging.
We're charging?
Not we, yes.
This is the, no, the business.
Not this, not this, this, the city.
All right.
There are all the people there charging for that parking.
I'm sorry, there's a lot of people talking right at me. So right now, uh, this is city-owned property, let's establish that. There is somebody else who's nearby, another business owner, who is charging money for people to park their car on a city-owned lot. Am I understanding that correctly? I am understanding that correctly. Okay, now, since you're my only city official here today, Miss St. Anj, that doesn't seem to be right. Somebody sees me benefiting, uh, from the city in a way that I don't think is lawful. What are we doing about that? Are you, first of all, are you aware of that?
I found out when we tried to sell this property. I, I don't drive around the city too much at night. Um, so it's something that was recently, um, that I found out recently, and this is why we declared a surplus. This is why we wanna get an owner there that's gonna take care of, take care of the, um, who's gonna put, this is owned by whoever it's owned, um, close it in, secure it, and take care of it.
My recommenda- or suggestion was going to be, and I don't know all the details here, was that we would go ahead and actually have certain stickers for parking there, and if you didn't have a parking sticker from the city there, then you would be liable for being towed, uh, and charged. But if we got a sticker for that, like you would do it north, like in the other spot, I don't know, a hundred bucks a month or whatever the going rate is, I don't know. But that way, the city makes a little bit of money. We have to upkeep this thing, right? We're paying, taxpayers are paying to make sure that thing, and we're liable if something happens, slip and fall. We're still liable for stuff on our property right there, so...
See, it's, this is why I'm trying to sell, sell the property, you know? Unfortunately, I can't be out there at night and checking, you know?
But I'm not suggesting that you should be, it's not your respons- not through you, Mr. Chairman, it's not your responsibility. We have, we have, we have departments in the city whose responsibility it is. There's a parking division, there's inspectional service. There are people who do law enforcement or, or traffic enforcement type of things. That's my recommendation, it's not the plan department's role to be enforcing ordinances, that's not, that's your role. So anyway, just a thought, we can certainly flush that out later, I don't know what's gonna happen. But, but I just wanted the committee to understand my concerns, and through maybe the, um, maybe the applicants as well. And I do appreciate the applicant's comments regarding, uh, their vision and how they see things flowing out as far as uh, the big picture of, 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 um, residences in the city of Lawrence, housing in the city. I do appreciate, very valid, very legitimate, there's some nuances that I would quibble with, but I'm not going to tonight. So, um, but I appreciate that, those comments, so, I'm done.
All right, uh, Mr. Chair, just, um, just to add something to that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so just, uh, regarding the spot, I think I might've felt differently if there was a plan for this spot, but there hasn't been a plan. And when you, when you go there, um, no one knows it belongs to the city. I only learned that it belongs to the city when this first came up, you know, a few months ago, and I was surprised that we owned it. But my first question was, okay, well, if we've owned it since two thousand and seven, why haven't there been any plans to use it? Something similar to, uh, to what you said. Um, you know, right now, uh, you know, during the nighttime, there are individuals, are like entrepreneurs, that basically, you know, charge to look after your car. Um, I don't necessarily think the city should be going after, uh, you know, people like that. Um, so I, I just wanna put that point of view there, uh, but I do think that this will provide a different, um, a different use for, uh, for that. Definitely will unemployed this person, but, um, well, you know, it might be a, you know, you could say a, a better use for, uh, that parking spot, especially since the city has no interest in doing anything with it. Because I think if, if there had been interest, uh, they would've shown it these last, uh, twelve, thirteen years.
Yep.
So, uh, I don't know if there's any questions?
No, you still have...
So I'd like to, uh, uh, make a motion.
I still have one more comment that I would like to make, I mean, but you can make the motion again.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to send us without a recommendation to the full council. Without a recommendation.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, there is a motion on the floor, please second. I wa- I wanted to just say a few things, uh, before we actually take a vote. Um, this essentially what, what I see as the beginning of having a walk-up of downtown, where people are gonna come down, live there, and be able to walk around and be able to actually eh, have a, essentially a walk-up of city. Starting with a project like this, gonna establish the difference. If we, as a city, make sure that, uh, we continue with that path. Um, having more space or not having a space, on my end at least, what I, what I vision here is, is having people that is gonna shop in downtown, that they're gonna buy local, and gonna, uh, actually, um, increment our possibilities, uh, by having a project like this, and also having other, um, uh, investors coming down to see the potential of, of, uh, downtown Lawrence. Uh, without further ado, I would like to call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, uh, Johan and the applicants, what's this means tonight is that we send this over to the full council without having a recommendation, what we'll, what we'll do. Uh, when I present this at the full council, I, I will present it as a committee report, and the full council, when it is going to ask questions about the lot, about the project, about whatever they feel like, just like we have today, uh, I think that it is a great start, uh, but it's not a negative recommendation. It is a, a recommendation that, uh, that they're gonna, they're gonna take the opportunity to discuss with you guys as well. Uh, thank you for coming tonight, and, uh, and I hope that everything goes well. Counselor, there is any other, um, items that you would like to, uh, take out of the table matters? Since there is none...
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks, all right, thank you.
Eliza?
Is this your...